It's 5:30, would you please stand and join Charles Alderson in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the Texas pledge.
Honor to Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state under God, one indivisible.
And now join Mary Ann Lee in our prayer.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this season of the year where we are thankful. And we thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us, our community, our faculty, our students. Please be with everyone through this school year. Please bless those tonight who are suffering, who are recovering from bad things that have happened to them in shootings and in tragic incidents. Please be with our school district, Lord, our administrators. Please bless our children. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. We begin tonight with presentation of posters.
Well, I believe that some of our local pastors and faith leaders are here to present us with some posters. We always like when folks come bearing gifts, so whoever wants to come forward and talk about those posters, we're excited.
I have a little statement about the posters I'd like to read to y'all. Dear Gatesville ISD, the churches of the city of Gatesville are excited to present you with a copy of the national motto of the United States. It is our hope that the rich history of this nation and the role our trust in God has played throughout will be learned and cherished. May this motto serve as a public acknowledgement that not only the city of Gatesville, but the state of Texas recognizes and honors God. For as our first president once proclaimed, "It is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey his will, to be grateful for his benefits, and to humbly implore his protection and favor." President George Washington. As you display this token given from the community in each of the schools, we pray that it will be a reminder that in him we put our trust and that in turn he will send a divine protection over our most precious posterity. May the angelic host watch over and protect the students of Gatesville as they are placed in the capable hands of the teachers and staff, and that it would be an environment rich with learning. May God bless you and keep you in all your ways.
I'm Bill Trotter, pastor of a local church right here, and here is the poster that we're talking about. And just to let y'all see it, and on the back it's got...
Thank you.
And on the back it has papers of all the churches and the pastors that have signed and supported this. And there's a law, you know, and there's a bill, 797, that was passed last year that these can be put up in these schools and in all the campuses as long as it was given to y'all. Y'all can't, it says y'all can't do it yourselves, but we can give it to y'all and be put into the schools. But you know, I just want to stress that y'all don't think we're trying to push this law on you because we're not. I want you to think about using the law for somebody says, "I want you to take it down." You can tell them it's the law. We can put it up there. So, but anyway, here it is. And I just pray that, you know, all of our teachers and school board members and our coaches, I just pray that y'all all use Godly wisdom. And I thank y'all for what y'all do, for your services. Where do I have?
So, I'm Diana Fincher, and I'm proud to present, help present this on behalf of, and then we have a list of 20 different entities, House That God Built, and First Methodist Church of Gatesville, the Presbyterian Church, First Baptist Church, Hidden Gems Family Center, Grace Bible Church, Eastwood Baptist Church, Highway to Heaven, Biker Church, The Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints, Cornerstone Church, Coriell Community Church, Gatesville Church of Christ, Cedar Ridge Church of Christ, White Mound Baptist Church, Legacy Outfitters, Righteous Roots, North Fort Hood Industries, King Baptist Church, Hay Valley Baptist Church, and Mound Cowboy Church.
That's great. And Wendell, do you have food too?
Well, it's a little bit hard to eat this, but what we have is we have one of these for each campus.
Good.
Yes, and so I'd like to present these.
We do. Yes, and I think you want a picture of each principal. Do you want the principals to come up? So if you guys wouldn't mind, y'all want a group photo? Is that what you're wanting?
Yeah.
Group? Oh, come on. Okay, come on up.
We have one for the boys and girls club. They were supposed to be here, but we'll be...
Okay, good, good. I know Julie will be glad to have you. We got space here, we got space. And Keegan is at her son's basketball game, but she would be glad to have her, I'm sure.
All right, y'all ready? One, two, one, two, two more, one, two, one more.
The tall kid should have been in the middle.
Which one's that? Thank you, guys. Now, this is great. Thank you all so much. You will appreciate it.
I would just like to say one more thing. The person who organized this, coordinated this, is Lauren Morell. She is active duty master sergeant out at North Fort Hood. So thank you very much, Lauren, for bringing this into our community and to our schools.
Bill, Lynn, thank you, guys. You're welcome. Diane, thank you. Wendell.
You're welcome.
Very much.
And in continuance of fun things, we have staff spotlight.
Let's see. Students first? I can do students first. Jason's got to get back to basketball practice, so. So you guys know that we've had a lot of success in our fall sports and extracurricular activities. I mean, it's been beyond success. It's done tremendously. And you've probably all heard that Carlo got second silver medal at the cross fifty race. And Vanya, his sister, was 12. And Jason was, as a freshman, 90th, which means he beats 60, at least 60 other kids, so that's... But one reason why I'm honoring them tonight is not about that, because everybody's already seen all that on Facebook. It's what they did after the event. This was really cool because each one of them, I was kind of tracking, stalking them on Facebook, their parents. But Vanya has to go the same day and play a playoff volleyball game. And in warmups, we watched her roll her ankle. And she still plays phenomenally and does great. And I just, it's a testament of what all the kids do. Carlo went immediately, I think, and visited Carlton or another one of the, he was making college visits, like the same day that he ran, I think. And then Jason did a little thing called the New York Marathon. I think the very next day flew to New York with mom and did a component of it. How much did you run that next day?
3.2.
Just 3.2. Yeah, that was awesome. I mean, these guys are doing, they run in a state competition, and the same day or very next day, they're doing all of that. I mean, that's amazing. And that's what people don't see is the things past, you know, the silver medals and all the recognition certificates is the work ethic and the things they do after that. So we wanted to honor them. These guys have already been honored once before, but I wanted to do it one more time because they sure deserve it. So guys, come on up. Here's yours. And Carlo. Marie, these are your students. You want to come on up here too? Vanya? The principal's up. Let's get over there and we'll take one for the newspaper. You'll think about that right here?
Are you jealous, Kevin?
Okay, on two, one, two, one, two, one more, one, two. Thank you.
Good job, guys. Thank you, y'all. Oh, mom, mom needs one.
Sorry.
That was the essential. This is the...
Yeah, and Carlo, tell everybody where you committed to.
Oh, I committed to Louisiana Monroe on a full ride.
Yeah, we will sure miss Carlo, but we're glad that we'll have Vanya and Jason for a few more years. All right. Now, staff, we want to honor a couple of staff members. First off, Adam Fitzer. He's not technically staff, but he feels like staff. Adam is a longtime JST parent. I had a little Facebook stalking on Adam too, to give a little bit of background here. So, of course, he and his wife Colleen, their son Stephen was a JST graduate. He plays football at Harton Simmons. I see he's doing really well there, playing football. Their daughter Casey's a current high school student and outstanding tennis player. I think Wendell can attest to that. And again, he's not technically a staff member, but he certainly feels like a vable member. He's our very first friends-on-duty volunteer, and he has really made a presence be felt on the campus, making sure doors are being checked and hallways are checked. And I know it's an unpaid gig, but he puts in countless hours. And how many steps per day, Adam, do you get? 20,000 usually?
Yeah, usually about 20.
That's unbelievable. 20,000 steps a day. So as a veteran of the Army's 82nd Airborne Division, this seems like the perfect role for Adam. He's become a bit of a local celebrity with the news station, even covering his assignment. But with all the uncertainty and dangers that we have in the world, we're sure glad to have people like him around watching over the kids and helping us. So Adam, we'll give you a small...
May I?
Yes, go ahead, Mary Ann.
You helped us, my dad and me, the other day at the veterans' meeting. Thank you for your help.
You're welcome.
Adam's always a litigant helping hand.
He was very helpful.
Adam, come on up to get your certificate.
All right. Two, one, two, one, two, one, two. Thank you.
One more. Next, we have Alex Fulton. Alex is a worker at the junior high campus, and he took over the ISS classroom. He transferred it, transformed it from just a disciplinary but also instructional setting. He really tried to teach those students. And when they're assigned there, he makes sure that they, you know, act right, act accordingly, and do their work. His primary focus is for students to change their behavior so they don't come back. One way he achieves this is by cultivating good relationships with the students and checking in on them, even when they're out of ISS. And he's currently working towards getting his teaching certificate, so we're sure hoping he gets that soon. So he can come back and teach, and he wants to coach here in Gatesville as well. Until then, we're sure proud to call him our own at junior high. His wife Shelby teaches English at junior high. And he's also coordinated some fishing tournaments. I did this with Brad Charles pitching. Bass fishing, right?
Catfishing. We do a little bit of bass fishing for like the veterans and stuff. We do stuff for veterans, you know, wounded warriors and all that stuff. We call them in. We don't really do competitions for them. We just feed them and show them a good time.
That's great. And he's been trying to get our students involved in that as well, so. And he's very diligent also with campus security. And the main reason we're honoring him tonight is because he harassed Calvin Fuller. Calvin, of course, wanders aimlessly onto campus without checking in or doing anything he's supposed to do.
I did check.
And so...
I just didn't have a pass.
Yeah, so Alex stopped him and questioned him, and Calvin can attest that we are very diligent on our security. And so that was just a little thing, but Alex does a good job all the time, so Alex, we're sure glad to have him. The other thing Alex does is every time he sees me in the hallway, he salutes me.
I didn't give you a whole morning.
Not one more?
This time we move to part of our board meeting where we open it for public comments. Are there any signed up? Having none signed up, we'll move on to consent agenda.
And I know you guys that got recognized probably need to skedaddle, so we won't be mad at you if you need to go, okay? So thank you, guys.
Calvin, if you ever want to smoke, just let me know.
You wouldn't be ready.
Even though I just got done with my run, I'll still...
Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. We will list the items on consent agenda, and if any board member wants to pull an item to discuss it, you may. Otherwise, we'll vote and have all of those items accepted in one big lump. Eight minutes, eight A minutes of the October 17th meeting. Financial statements as of October 31st. Bills and payroll for October 22. Budget amendments, year-to-date budget amendments to fund balance. Vital signs report, food service report. Does anybody have one of those pulled? Do I hear a motion that we accept the consent agenda? Jimmy, a second. Mary Ann, all in favor? And that passes. Now we have items that we don't vote on. We just have information. And the first is the ESL program evaluation.
Oh, me.
Julia, you're up.
Do you have it, or you want me to pull my computer up?
Right here.
Oh, you got it.
Yep.
All right, where do I go?
If you want the pudgy, you can have the pudgy.
Okay.
Make you real official, Julia.
Yeah, I'm going to try it towards where I can read it.
You're good.
Hello, I'm Julia Martin. I'm the ESL coordinator for the district. This is something that TEA regulates and wants it proposed every November, so here I am. There are some acronyms and definitions there of our program. TELPASS is our biggest state assessment, which is the Texas English Language Proficiency Assessment System. And then we have just some little conversations of what our students are called. Our newest one is EB, which is a merchant bilingual. They like to keep it positive. ESL is an intensive language instruction program, and our goal is to make them be equal with everybody else in the school. One of the new things that's come out of the reading academy and also with all the new things that go on with learning and just being more advanced is the CBLI program, which is, used to be sheltered instruction, but now it's just really content emphasized using your linguistic and cognitive needs and a merchant bilinguals. So it's just really reaching them in a more advanced way. They can get out on the playground, they can play, but we want them in the classroom to be more academic. So we are encouraging talk, just talk, talk, talk. At Gatesville, we have a content-based ESL program. We also have a, you can roll it over. The important parts of the content base is we want our teachers to, in the English language, the language arts, to have their ESL certification. Of course, we encourage anybody else to also have it. The most important thing is, though, if the, like in the older schools, in the upper grades, you know, when they have pods and that kind of thing, if they're not all ESL certified, then we have to pull them out. So content-based is better, but pull-out is not bad. It's okay. And there's the pull-out part. So like, for instance, if the ELAR teacher is not ESL certified, we encourage them to get ESL certified. But you have to have in that whole little base, all the major four quarters, the English, the math, the social studies, and science, for it not to be a pull-out. So the number of students enrolled, we have 10 in pre-K, and then if you look at the number on the right, that's the ones that are being monitored or they're called reclassified. So we're working on reclassifying that. If you look at fourth grade, we have a big number there. So to not be a bilingual district, which is not bad, you want to be qualified as a bilingual district, you have 20 students all speaking the same language. So at that 20 right now, they're not all speaking the same language. We have a German, and then we have a Vietnamese, and then a Chinese, so it's close. Our district TELPASS rating results, so when they take the state assessment, they're rated in four ways. There's four domains. There's listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And in that same little level, listening's the easiest, speaking's a little more difficult, reading's a little more difficult, and writing's the most difficult. But in kindergarten, in first grade, with the TELPASS, it's not computerized. It's the teachers are rating the students. And then second through 12th grade, it is going to be computerized. This year, for the first time, we are including writing like they did with the STAR. I think it happened, what, about two, three years ago with the writing on that? So they're putting writing into the computer. One thing I do not have clear on right now is if people will actually be looking at the writing and rating it, or is it going to be computerized? I'm not sure. Because they are actually typing in answers, so we'll find out. This is brand new this year, and we'll find out what's going to happen with that. So it's going to be a little bit harder just because it's new, because they're having to type in and, you know, do that kind of thing. But it's, we're all practicing for it right now, so we're working hard. Our district results, out of 114 students that took the spring TELPASS of 2022, 95 of the students that took the TELPASS of 2021, the results on the composite scores are falling. So 34 students showed growth, 53 stayed on the same level, eight students dropped, 19 students were first-time takers. So we don't, TELPASS for kindergarten is the first time they ever take it. So that was a big number. There was like 12, and I believe in that number. And then we had some new to district students that just came straight over that were new language learners. Part of this is just that each year, the state of Texas loves to make the test a little more challenging, that kind of thing, which happens, you know, wherever we are in each little domain. But we just stay up with it, and we just go to workshops and we keep working. This is the STAR results. So the reason this is up here is to reclassify. You have to have an advanced tie after first grade. Well, you can have it in first grade. You can have an advanced tie in first grade on all four domains, reading, speaking, listening, and writing. I had them out of order. But you have to take like a test that determines like the Woodcock, not the Woodcock, the, I lost my train of thought, but something that... What is the, like one of the tests, I'm sorry, I got confused a little bit. But the test like where you master all the things that other students are compared to. They have to do 40% better or above. The Iowa basic skills, yeah, sorry, I lost my train of thought. So they have to score 40% better or above, which is extremely hard. We had a little boy so smart, and he missed it by like three questions. And it was like, oh my goodness, you know, and that comes through Region 12, so, you know, you can't retest them. It's just something that you have to deal with. Now, when STAR starts, they have to either be approaching masters, meets, or masters. So we have the STAR scores in there as well. This are our number of teachers that are ESL certified. We have eight in primary, 22, and then you can see the others. The others are like administrators, that kind of thing. We would encourage everyone to get ESL certified. It's a hard test to take, but our district does pay for it, and they also pay for you to go get the education for it. So you can go to Region 12, take a couple of classes. They really help you a lot. The test is not easy. You can retake it more than once, so it's just a really good thing to have happen. So we encourage everyone to do that. These are some of my professional development that I attend and that I encourage others to attend. I just put an example up there because at the end you'll see why this presentation's here is that I have to show that I have ongoing education. At least three to four times a month, I'm attending something, and sometimes it's Zoom, which is really nice because as long as you sign up, they'll record it for you and you can watch it after hours. So Region 12 is great with that. We have two interventions for our ESL program. In pre-K, we have the Imagine Learning and Literacy, and we're extremely happy with that because the students are on the computer, but it's also teacher monitored and I have an aide. We walk around and we help the kids with whatever need they have, but they're able to speak into the computer, which is what TELPASS has them do. They're able to comprehend and do all the things that are needed, and then it goes and tests them, and then it goes back and repeats what they missed. So it's an extremely wonderful program. My ESL kids that I have right now, I have 10, and just to give you a little joke about them, it's eight boys, two girls, eight of them are language learners, and when we lined up, they're all in a dog pile, and the two girls are standing right over here. But we are working on that, and we're walking down the hall finally, so it's really cute because they're four. And the boys just see each other and they go, "Ah!" They run in, you know. But with the Imagine Learning program, it speaks to them in their language. The more they learn, it drops it off, so it's really cool. So fourth grade through high school, we have the ILL, which is a really wonderful program. It has all kinds of components, just it has vocabulary. I mean, it teaches everything that they're working on with the TELPASS. They have a read aloud, think aloud story that is in the accent of the story, like St. Beach Louis Armstrong. It will have the accent of the Louisiana person that's talking, and that's the narrator. And the kids just, they come in, they're like, can we start the story again? You know, I want to hear it right now. And I'm just like, okay, we'll get to that part after we do our lesson. So it's just an incredible program that the kids really enjoy. We also have Summit K-12, which is paid through Region 12. It's kindergarten through high school. And one of the benefits that I'm seeing right now is they have researched what's on the TELPASS. So we're looking at the writing part right now. That's really going to be one of the hardest things for us to move upon is that they're showing us with the Summit K-12 that the students are, they'll give a story, and then they have to type in the rest of the story, like what would the conclusion be? Or they're giving you a story and they're saying, "If you could help this person with this problem, what would you type in?" So we're actually using our keyboards, and we all have Chromebooks. Every one of us have Chromebooks. So we're working on that, which is one of the biggest things. The typing issue is difficult for fourth graders especially. Fifth grade's a little hard, but once they get six, they're starting to get it. So it's really very helpful. The speaking part is hard for our students. One thing that, the reason why it's hard is because they're embarrassed. They're sitting there with the computer in front of them, and it's saying, you know, "Say this, this, this," and then everybody around can hear what you're saying. So I'm working with that and getting them used to what they're doing. And I have some new ideas that I'm working with Dr. Sanderson on. We usually go over to the primary and the PD rooms and test them, but we're able to open up another room across from us where we have a proctor, and they could go over there and record and then come back to the room. So they're not being embarrassed by their peers. And then that's just another benefit of the program. It's just, it's brand new. They're really working with TEA, and it's just, I think the next couple of slides is the benefit of the program. So parent involvement. I'm really excited about this. This is something TA wants us to do, which I think is great. I sent out a newsletter that the parents can access. I sent them a letter welcoming to it and told them that they could come up and see me anytime. We also have our ESL summer school fiesta. I think Dr. Pollard came to that last time. That's for the younger kids. It's a great involvement. The parents come, they bring their traditional foods. We have a great time. It's just the end of the summer school. We just celebrate their accomplishments that they have. Daily phone calls for ESL parents and non-English speakers is ongoing. It happens all the time. I check their grades. My aide checks their grades, and then Ms. Morris checks their grades, who's also the other part of our program. And if they're failing, we give a parent a call, and we talk to them about what they can do better. We also give the teacher a call. We also give the teacher a call. You know, what, how can we help these students? One thing I'm really, really excited about, and I'm just faithful it's going to happen, is our Dr. Obragon, I don't know if you know him, he's the Gatesville Baylor Scott &amp; White Clinic, and he has an amazing story. He started off homeless, and now he's a doctor, and he's willing to come talk to our families and students on April 4th. This is what we have him scheduled for. We're hoping to, also, this was per Shane Webb, we're going to invite, and also, this is probably new to you, but we're going to ask for the culinary to have little sandwich foods and stuff out in front. It's going to be the high school auditorium. We've already reserved it. And he's excited, I'm excited. I've told my parents about it, and we're going to just send them personal invitations. Because I have some kids in the older grades that their attitude is, why are we still here? Well, they can't get out because of their STAR scores or whatever, and they think, you know, I'm just going to end up, I had a student tell me, which there's nothing wrong with this, I don't mean to say ugly, but I'm just going to end up just being a laborer, you know, which is, nothing wrong with that. But it's like, you can achieve what you want to achieve. So that's our accomplishment, for him to come in and build these older students up and let the families hear it, because they're all raising these kids, so. I'm excited about that. We're just, this is our program inflammation. It's just to make sure it has fidelity and precision. Just, I attend to all the TEA updates, ongoing training. That's where that was brought up in the little slide. And that's the law for me presenting in here today.
Julie does a great job. It's a difficult task when you have students come straight from another country. Like, it's not uncommon for someone from Guatemala to just show up, and Julia's tasked with trying to help integrate them into the school setting and help bridge the gap of the language barrier, and so she does a great job. And the Fiesta she has at the end of the summer is really fun.
And it, there's, you know, there's so many celebrations, but there's also a lot of things that people don't see on the other side, where, you know, we take a refugee in, a family has, and, you know, they don't have their parents, and they don't have this, and they don't have a home. And with the churches that came up earlier with that, and God, we trust, you know, we put them on our prayer list, and we pray for them, and they get a home. You know, there's just a lot of things out there that we can do because they're a community that's super important to me and to all of you. Do you have any questions?
Julie, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Friends on Duty.
Follow that, Damian.
Oh, I almost hope you hear that along.
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 not in a bad way. No, no. It's okay. I believe I know everyone here. I don't know if I've met you yet, Mr. Ford. I'm Sergeant White. I'm with the newly formed Gatesville ISD Police Department, and I've also been tasked with Friends on Duty. We did, I think initially, kind of talk about it being a veteran program, but we have thankfully pulled in members of the community, and Mr. Ford here, who doesn't always check in like he's supposed to, but he's still checking our security out. It's okay.
You wasn't there, it was your fault.
Right. So what we basically do is we have people who come and they apply, they talk to Dr. Sanderson, they go through the process, we're running criminal history, and then we kind of talk to them for a little bit more, make sure they understand the expectations. One of the big expectations that I think we're really starting to kind of push more is, sure, you're a volunteer, but you represent the school. So what you do in your off time can greatly affect whether or not you will stay a volunteer at the school. So, and that's just something we've had to talk about. Usually, I saw Adam earlier. I jokingly called him our Friends on Duty supervisor. He's a workhorse. We have several people who kind of show up here and there. We have a few veterans, Adam being one. Adam, and then Ms. Crozier, she shows up once a week at the high school. She's a full combat medic, so we have that information as well. We have Mr. Boardman, who works usually about three days a week at the intermediate. And then we have Mr. Olivar at the junior high. So we have a lot of either active duty or retired military. One of the things we did not expect to happen, which has been a huge blessing, the military likes to give stuff away. We have acquired an enormous amount of medical supplies. An enormous amount. I joke around that we have a bit of a trauma center now at the high school, at my office. We have supplies for things that I hope we never, ever have to use, but we now have the capability, so it's been nice. It's been a very interesting blessing. So as we stated earlier, they walk around, they check the doors. Adam, at least once every week or two, will actually go and check parking tags at the high school to make sure people are parked where they're supposed to be parking. We have run into some issues where students will switch vehicles out and not tell us, and now we have vehicles there, they're not supposed to be there. Are people parking out of people's parking spots? It's okay. It's an inside joke. That being said, it's been a great program, and we have some more people applying. It's been really positive overall. The kids have really responded, especially, I'm at the high school, so I can only speak for the high school, but I know particularly with Adam and Ms. Crozier there, the kids respond very positively to them. He has been on TV. We like to make sure he stays on TV and I stay off of TV. That's kind of the game plan. So that's pretty much it. It's just a really good volunteer program. I wish we had more people sign up for it. It's been really, really good. Those have been real positive. We have some people who are experiencing some medical issues, and they will probably be back at the beginning of the year, the calendar year, to start helping out, so we're looking forward to having some more people. So, do you have any questions?
Thanks, Damian. Yeah, it's a good program.
Now we have some more people to highlight.
Yes.
District updates.
So I wanted to highlight just a few of the successes in the fall. The fall sports and extracurriculars have sure set the bar high for our winter and spring activities, and so most of you guys know this already, but we placed higher in our band state marching contest than we've ever placed. And so Jose and Victor and the entire crew were very excited that day. I went down to Alvin and the Bear with several other staff members, parents and students, and it was really a nice event. And really, every one of those bands competing is basically flawless. And so it was quite an honor to be there, and for us to place that 18th and get the highest we've ever gotten was sure a feather in Jose's hat, the students' hat. They did a great job. Speaking of which, we said another good example in tennis. We were 19th in state. That was the final rank against the tennis team. So they had another phenomenal season. Wendell, I guess, has already left, but it's unbelievable how well all of our different activities are doing. The volleyball team, Coach Weber kind of got the monkey off her back, won her first playoff game, and then won a second, so they went three deep into that tournament, and so they were very excited about that. And then varsity, again, great, went over Robinson, had the bye week, and then came up a little bit short against Smithville, but they had a very good season as well, rebuilding, and Coach Hunter's been a great addition as head coach. And in choir, Memphis Wells and Katie Hobson, they advanced the area round of the TMEA All State Journey. Memphis took third chair in the bass section, Katie took fifth chair in the soprano. And then, of course, we've already talked about Vanya, Carlo, and Jason doing so well in the cross-country meet. And again, there were 150 runners there, so getting those places that they did shows that they were out competing a lot of really talented runners. So I think a lot of school districts would kill to have even one of those things, and for us to have all of them is a pretty big feat. And so we're very proud of all those kids, and now it's on to winter and spring activities. So all of the different things for choir and band and sports in the winter and spring, we're excited about it. Any comments about those things? All right.
Now, we're going to thank the people who donated for a sound system.
Yes, we're going to thank them and then go straight into the action items where we talk about the sound system. So Zach, you're about to be up. But we had Joyce Pruitt, longtime Gatesville resident and GHS alum come, and she gathered donations from a lot of different local businesses, and we want to thank all these different folks and organizations. Joyce Pruitt gave $5,000, JHL gave $5,000, TTG $5,000, Gatesville Ace Hardware $2,500, Gatesville Drug $2,500, Cadence Bank $2,000, Leirds $1,000, and First National Bank of Event Gatesville Hoplessby $1,000. So thanks to Joyce's footwork and pounding the pavement, and I think Jimmy was getting well informed of all that along the way. I think he went and helped some too, and they gathered a lot of money in a short amount of time, and so the community is very supportive of anything related to the kids. And so we're excited to use that money to try to help improve our sound system. It's time. We've got a lot of audio issues, and so.
I'll tell you this, Joyce is busy on another project at this time.
Yes.
She's really an asset to our community and our school district.
Yeah, Joyce came up again today with another check. Every time I see Joyce, I know there's money coming. And so, but she's, yeah, she's wanting to do another little project to get lighting around our Go Hornet sign, and hopefully get maybe the Fighting Hornet logo in like a metal piece work there. So there's lots of people busy behind the scenes trying to improve the way things look and help the kids out. Well, that brings us, and I've mailed thank you letters and some tax donation letters to all those entities too, so they can get their due, but I hope that the messenger will sure thank these guys publicly in the newspaper, because they really did a great job. So that leads us to the first action item, which is replacement of the stadium sound system. Zach, if you want to come on up and put your flash drive in the computer while he's doing that, I'll go ahead and talk a little bit about it. You know, we have had to get supplemental sound every time we have a special event. Graduation, Veterans Day, and even towards the end of the football season, the speakers totally blew. At least half of them were just blown. And so Steve is here with Steve, Scuba Steve Sound, and Steve's sound supplement is really the best that we have had, because as a speaker, when you speak into the microphone, you're not hearing yourself. And it's that when you're speaking into the mic in front of a big audience, that is huge, because it's very distracting when you're hearing yourself speak. And so I went to Steve and I said, Steve, I really want this stadium sound redone. Would you consider doing it? He said, no, but I've got the guy for you. And so he introduced us to Zach Tao. And so Zach, tonight, we'll need you to brag on yourself, talk to the board about what all you do sound-wise, and they're going to have a list of questions. The main thing, though, that everybody, the donors, the board included, want to get across is if we're going to do it, we want to do it right, we want it done well, to where two, three, four years from now, we're not saying, golly, I can't hear anything. So Zach, you think you have the solution?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Good deal.
No pressure.
Yeah, no pressure. First thing, the clicker doesn't work.
You might need to fix that, too.
That's right, that's right. Okay, so yeah, just a little bit about me. Full-time, I serve as the manager of media services at the University of Mary Harden Baylor. There, oversee all the audio, video, sound, lighting, video, live streaming on campus, as well as our wonderful team that services all those events. I also serve as the technical director at Bethel Church in Temple. All the same stuff, just in a church setting. And then previously, I've served as the media director at Emmanuel Baptist Church and production director at Awaken Church in Round Rock. And then you can see me there directing video for Temple High School at their football So then in 2020, I've been getting a lot of requests, because people would see what I was doing in my employment capacities, to work on sound systems, install sound systems, lighting systems, video systems. So I started my own company in 2020 to provide support and design systems for other entities, churches, and school districts that, you know, would like that. So that's what we've been doing, and really excited to get approached by Dr. Pollard and the athletic director about this project, to talk about how we could get the sound at the stadium up to par. So there's just some recent clients that we've had. So the PA system that I put together, I tried a lot of different speakers and models and acoustic simulation software, and I landed on the size of the stadium on, only installing two of these Community R. 566 Max speakers. So they're a 60-degree by 60-degree throw, which is a little more narrow than your typical, like, 90 or 100, and that gets kind of more of a projected sound right onto the stands. So what's really nice about this software is you can actually get a model of the exact speaker and place it to scale and see what sound it would reproduce. So you can actually see your stadium there to scale with the speakers installed. And we've talked with Dr. Pollard and the athletic director, they mentioned that they would like the sound to come from the scoreboard, originally at the scoreboard. There's basically two types of systems, which I explained. There's a distributed system where you have speakers around the stadium, you know, only doing small zones each, or you do larger speakers at one point that go everywhere. So the advantage of this is you only hear it once. If you have a speaker on your right side and on your left side, and you're closer to the left one, you hear it from the left one first, then from the right one, you get that kind of weird echo sound that Dr. Pollard just mentioned. So if we have the speakers.
Zach started to interrupt, because as a layperson, I was thinking, well, we need to have a speaker by the concession and by the visitor and by the hub, because I'm thinking, well, that's the way it works, right? So what you're saying, Zach, is that that could compete against each other, basically.
So both options are viable, but I prefer, especially in a stadium like this, to just do everything at one point, and then you basically get the sound once. And then, of course, when you're creating sound this loud, it's going to hit surfaces and echo back, but you're not hearing it from the speaker directly twice.
Zach, another big thing that we want to make sure is that we can hear from all areas of the stadium, whether you're at the concession stand, standing along the fence, visitor, the home side, the band behind, which is kind of behind the scoreboard, will they all be able to hear everything?
Yes, so I did mention on here that the, I don't know if you can see the laser that far away, but it does say the concessions will be a little quieter with this setup, because that's the nature of the setup, of doing everything at one point, and the concessions are very far away in this setup of the track. So, but you can see that it's kind of hard to see if the decibel readings, but at this volume, it would hit about 89 on the front row, closest to the speaker, which is not like concert level, but that's pretty loud. That's louder than most high school stadiums.
So where is this you're talking about? The front row?
The front row of the home side or the visitor's side is the loudest point. And then on the back row, at the furthest point, it drops down to about 86. So it's real close there, there's not really much of a difference there. Once you get to the concession stands, then it's about 81, 82, which is still about in line with how most high school stadiums sound. Most high school stadiums are between like 82, 83, up to like 85, 86. So this system has the capability of being that loud everywhere, but that would come at the expense of it being a little louder at the stands, and that's the nature of one point. So there's pros and cons of both systems.
Zach, another thing that we want to get across to you is that even if we need to pay a little bit more in order to make sure that everything, every park can, every area of the stadium can hear, that was another thing that we want to get across to you tonight, too. So keep that in mind. If you think, I wanted to save you some money, so I didn't put something here, let us know, because we'd rather it be done right and pay a little bit more.
And of course, we could consider putting speakers at the concession stand, but as it is now, it's still very audible and clear there, it's just not as loud as it would be in the stands or on the field. So, but that's definitely an option that we could do.
So what is it going to be to the band who's back there?
So it would be very loud there, yes. That's the nature of, if it's loud enough for you to hear on the home side and the visitor's side, it's got to be louder. It didn't look like in the acoustic models, it got much more than 101, 102, but that's concert-level sound there. That's not quiet, but it's not like 120, like a jet plane landing. So it's loud, but not.
Very loud.
Yeah. And with marching bands, they should be wearing hearing protection anyway because of the loud instruments, so it shouldn't be much louder than a tuba standing right behind them, from their perspective, so. So then, I'm not going to try and get too much into the details, but under the, where the band stands are, we'd have to put an outdoor rack to house the power amplifier. So in order to get high-quality sound, we want to get the amp as close to the speaker as we can. So instead of putting the amp in the press box and running cables all the way to the scoreboard, we would put an outdoor-rated rack with cooling under the stands there, and then run, just run the cables up to the speakers to get it real short and get good high-quality audio. We'd also have power conditioners to keep the equipment safe with remote power off, so we'd have a key switch to turn the whole system off from the press box. And then lightning suppressors in there, if there's a lightning strike nearby, will keep the induced voltage from damaging equipment. And we're talking with Dr. Pollard and the athletic director, they're specific about wanting the ability to control the audio from an iPad remotely. So we're looking at installing a Behringer Exar 18 mixer with some localized Wi-Fi, so they can take the iPad anywhere in the press box, and then anywhere up in the range of the Wi-Fi around the press box, you know, in the home stands, they could control the audio. Which, that's really great, because something we run into, all the football games I've been a part of, U of H B Temple, is if you're in the press box with the windows closed, it's hard to tell how it sounds out there. So you're, you can't really hear. So they can take the iPad anywhere in the press box and then anywhere up in the range of the wifi around the, the press box, you know, in the, the home stands, they could control the audio, which that's really great because, um, something we run into, um, all the football games I've been a part of, U M H B Temple, is if you're in the press box with the windows closed, it's hard to tell how it sounds out there. So you're, you can't really hear, you could be blasting everyone's ears. So this is a great solution to get out there and actually hear what people are hearing and get the level set right. So it's loud enough for everyone, but not hurting anyone's ears. Uh, we'd also put in a playback unit. I, I love these units because they can take everything. They can take a CD and an SD card, a USB stick, Bluetooth, FM radio and aux cable. So when you have a visiting team's cheerleader show up with the sound, you know, their song on a CD, you can just pop it in. You're not losing any functionality. You can play anything that pops up. Um, we also put in the proposal for a new announcer microphone, a high quality microphone with an external button to press to, um, to mute and unmute. Uh, the athletic director also mentioned wanting additional wireless microphones. So included in the proposal is two wi- um, two sheer wireless microphones. Those can either be handhelds or the, um, the body packs. We just have to decide, um, before we purchase. And then also a microphone for the referees included. And then the physical mute switch, a lot of leagues, I believe U I L, um, requires them to have a physical switch. You probably see that on NFL and college broadcasts because they want to make sure that they can mute their mic. So that's included as well. Um, and then a small computer that can play back, um, Spotify music. The athletic director mentioned that's what they use to play music. So they can, um, from the iPad, play music back off of that computer that's in the rack. So that way they have control of that remotely. That also provide, um, the ability to do remote support of the sound system. If someone ever calls me up and says, hey, we're having this issue, I can actually get in and control the soundboard remotely and, and help them out with that. So it wouldn't require driving all the way here just to work on that.
Zach, the mics for the referee in the field was something specifically that donors were wanting to make sure that we had. What, um, we may want to get an additional microphone. So there would be one main one for the announcer, but if we had two people side by side, could we have two microphones?
Of course. And there's already the one there. So that could be for secondary or backup or whatever you need. This is just additional. So.
Steve, you're an expert sound guy. Do you trust Zach to do a good job?
Uh, yes, I do. I've worked with Zach for quite a while now. You know, like I'm a business owner and I'm a sound guy. The bar, the biggest part of being a good business owner is hiring people that are 10 times smarter than you. So I hire Zach.
Steve does a lot of professional bands at bare bones. They come and do things. And so he does a lot of sounds that he knows. So, yeah, yeah. So you may, I go to U M H B football game. The guy running the sound is you?
No, um, his name is Pat Parsons. Uh, I've been running the video this year because, um, we have a, a spot missing there. But, um, I'm usually involved with him telling him, hey, that, you know, when there's feedback on the ref mic, hey, pull that down a little bit and stuff. I've, I've been known to, to jump over the, they have a chain on the staircase. I've been known to hurdle over that to get to, hey, fix this now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But he's a great guy and does a, a pretty good job.
And you did Temple High football?
Mm-hmm. All the, the video work. Yes, sir.
Okay. And so if we were going to call somebody to get more references, you, one of those slides had different, uh, entities you had done sound work for?
Absolutely.
Okay. And you said predominantly churches, schools and, and stadiums and things like that?
Yes.
Jimmy, I think you had a list of some questions.
You've covered pretty much everything. The one that has, what, is there a warranty or that we've got it a year and all of a sudden we just had a problem? Are you going to be the guy or?
Yes, sir. Yes. Um, in the, I sent Dr. Pollard more detailed proposal than what I presented here. That gets more into the details. But yes, there is a, a warranty included in that.
So that's going to cover the call. If, if it just craters, it just quits?
So, yeah.
Just parts and labor or?
For, for, for one year, yes, all parts and labor. And then if it goes out after one year, then it's the manufacturer's warranty. But then we'd have to, um, pay for the labor to replace that.
Okay. For how long would that exist?
I believe it was five years. So I'd have to look on the, um, whatever the, and it is also based on the manufacturer's warranty, but most of the manufacturer's warranties are at least five years. But I could get more specifics on that if needed.
I bet. That's really, you, you've covered pretty much the list.
I have some questions.
Charles, go ahead.
Yes.
The vo- I'm the voice of the band and I go to lots of stadiums and I go to all the press boxes. And one of the things that is impressive to me with about three or four that I've been to, and you might be doing the same thing in Temple, is there is a sound technician at a console. And the console is a computer, tablet, whatever you have. And that sound technician manages the audio for the game. He's trained on that equipment to manage that, uh, that equipment. He is the one who speaks into the speaker that the people hear. He has a professional radio voice. And he also manages the game. For example, if there are first downs, he has things on his pads that, that initiate a crowd, uh, uh, booster thing for hurrah for first downs. He has things on there that he, when, uh, like if you wanted to have a, a person in the community sponsor first downs in a quarter, just pick one out of the air, say Hillside. Uh, that was a, could be a Hillside first down. Those things, they just mash a button and they all happen that, you know? And then they have music that comes on, uh, when there's timeouts or things like that. All of the announcements that are required by U I L, all of the announcements of things about the concession stand, all of the announcements about, you know, Janie for bringing all of her cookies to the concession stand. All of that is pre-recorded before the school year even starts. And those things are run every year. They're done very professionally by a professional voice. I don't know who they use. It sounds like the system you're proposing can do all of that?
Yes.
And the, so that brings up my other concern. Would you be willing to train people to send over here to run that sound system on Friday nights?
Yeah, I'm sure that absolutely would.
Because another thing that happens in our s- our stadium and in stadiums I, I've been before where things don't work, is there's too many hands in the cookie jar. For example, uh, the other night we were playing a team and our sound went out for the drill team. There are at least 15 people turning knobs, pulling screws, grabbing things. There's no way that all 15 of those people could solve a problem. We needed one person there that knows what they're doing to say, this is exactly what we did, need to do. People were hauling in fans trying to cool the system. I mean, it was just bizarre.
Yeah. Charles is making this sound real good.
And I thought as a community member, as a community member, sitting in a beautiful stadium that this district paid so much for and so many people were impressed, to have all of that confusion and cacophony up in that thing is, it really hacked me off. So anyway, uh, I would like to just make sure that whoever runs this thing is a professional announcer. They know how to run all of the equipment. If you have to have somebody that's sitting there, uh, watching the game, giving them who's making the first downs or who's, who made the longest runs to the quarterback, that's fine. I don't mind that. But whoever's actually doing all this needs to do what they do. Now, when I come up to announce the band, this man says, this is the microphone and this is exactly what you mash and this is what you say. Because you, I don't just grab it and turn it on and, you know, sling it everywhere. I'd say we need to take care of this thing. And we need to have a few people who know how to operate it, probably someone in district and you.
Yeah.
And nobody else has a key.
And of course, and yeah, and the, and the turn on.
That's just my two cents word. I'm sorry. I mean, you come up there and we have little league players and men in the community who don't have any idea how to run that system, opening that box and turning knobs and it's, that's why it's the way it is.
And of course, as part of the proposal, that's includes training some of your personnel, whoever you pick. And then the, um, the on and off button for the whole system is a physical key. So.
So if someone in the community wanted sound, they would have to go through the district and get you there, get, get you to send somebody to run it. Or train somebody in the district. That would be my recommendation.
So I mean, it could be either way. I could train one of your people and then that's who you bring up or if you wanted to hire me or to bring myself or someone that's knowledgeable on it. That's entirely up to you.
We could even look at the layout of the press box to see if we need to move some things to where.
Make it more like a console.
Where it's more and more concealed. So there's less, fewer people going in there.
Right. Way, way, way too.
So my question is.
Yes, sir.
So you said part of your, in your budget or whatever is your training, right?
Yes.
So you, so it's not free, your training, right?
No, but it's already included. It's no, it's in the proposal. That's any, any installation that I ever do, I always include at least half a day to a day of training hands-on with someone because otherwise you didn't really do anything. Cause no one really knows how to use what you just put in. So even, even basic stuff that I put in at places, I still make sure to allocate time to train people.
Well, first four or five times out, I would love for your people to be up there doing it.
Yeah.
Because you train them in May and then the game's in September and nobody remembers like how do you even turn it on?
What about product availability? All the supply chain issues you hear about in different industries? Would you have any trouble getting into these things quickly or?
Yeah. Everything is, that I presented here in the proposal today is at least within the next month or two, it seems like it.
That was a question. When could you start and approximately, how long would it take you to turn the key, ready to go?
Oh, I'm, I'm anticipating three days. I like to allocate four just to be safe. Um, but, uh, it's going to be based on, like Dr. Pollard said, product availability before we can get to that point. But I'm hoping once we get everything ordered, it's within a month to two months to get everything in. Nothing is backordered a year like some other products are right now.
And everything is guaranteed for outdoor?
Yes, sir.
And I heard you say lightning strikes?
Yes. Now, of course, a, a direct strike is.
I'm not talking.
Yeah, catastrophic. But there will be lightning protection, um, for any induced voltage of nearby strikes.
Do you have to run wires from the press box to the console or whatever, or is it wireless?
The, the console is wireless. The speakers will, um, audio lines will have to be ran from the press box to, um, the amp rack. This rack that will be installed under the, the band bleachers to go up to the speakers where the amp sits. There'll be an audio line running from the press box to there. And, um, we've already talked about it. There's already conduit ran there. So we won't have to do any trenching to get to that.
You don't have to tear up the turf to get to it. What else? Can y'all think of other questions, concerns?
Yes.
About how much is this cost?
20,000 approximately.
Yeah, the proposal was around 19,300 or so.
Yep.
Has 19,470 or 740 or something like that?
Yeah, something around there.
Yeah, 19,267.
Zach, you live in Temple?
Yes, sir.
So you're not going to skip town with the money, right?
No.
I will come hunt you down.
Yeah. But you're bad though.
Here's my bag.
Just go over to Park Street. I will locate you. I'm, I am very amazed that you're going to be able to do all this for $20,000.
It, yeah, it's a.
I was thinking 50, 60.
These, these speakers are, have definitely come down in price, these community speakers.
With everything going up, they're coming down. That's amazing.
Well, they're, they're probably going back up now, but yes, over, if you look over decades, yeah, they definitely come down a lot, these Dallas speakers. And they have a good frequency response to, so they have, they have some low into them too. They're not going to be just a real thin horn sounding speaker.
About how long do the speakers last, you know?
I would say 10 to 20 years would be an expected lifespan. Uh, 10 is kind of the go-to, but you could probably stretch it to 20 if they're well taken care of.
Board, do you want to do any more calling around, reference checking, or might task me with doing something else? Or do you want to go ahead and give the go-ahead tonight? It's up to you. Go ahead.
You said well, well taken care of. What do you do with them to take care of them?
Um, make sure, and that would be on me to make sure there's a limiter in place so that the level can't get too loud. And then make sure that either no one can adjust that limiter or no one does adjust that limiter. Because where, where you really start to damage speakers is when there's not like a hard limit to get the audio level through. And the people go crank it up. They, they say, I want more bass and they go crank up the bass and that speaker can't reproduce something that low. And then it, it breaks the horn.
But you said there is a key box that you have to be able to get into.
Yeah. So it'll be a key box to turn it on and off and on the.
As long as we have a key, they can't get in.
Yes. And there'll be a system processor to limit the audio. So that way the audio can't reach that threshold.
And you would be willing to, to just send some people over here to run it for the first few times or whatever?
Yeah. And that, that wasn't included in the proposal, but I'm sure we could do that.
Zach, we'd gladly pay you to keep coming out to help us. So.
Yeah, no, not.
That's not the proposal it should do.
Yeah. This guy's good.
I thought you was going to do a free, you know, like Pay the Nation donation.
I think Charles, we may take you up in the press box as well and look around with Mr. Williams and see if we need to just enable the, kind of the, where everybody sits and things like that. Well, it would be my recommendation that we go ahead and approve Onyx Media to conduct a complete overhaul of the stadium sound system to give Zach time to purchase the materials and then, because that's mainly the waiting game. Actual installation doesn't sound like it would take long. It's just getting the stuff here. So.
I have one question though. When will this be completed by? When you started?
Oh.
When, when would you start it?
Um, I'm, I'm hoping to have it done by like March or April. Um, I would love to have it done, you know, February or March, but it, like I said, it's product availability.
Track me would be a real good way to trip.
Yeah.
Break it in.
That'd be the perfect time.
And they do it like the third week in February. Third week in February.
On March.
They do it like the third week in February. There is just February because it's always cold.
Do it early. Does anybody else have any, well, first of all, does anybody have a motion that we accept this? Okay, Jimmy, and seconded by Calvin. Well, um, any discuss, further discussion?
Love it.
All in favor? The motion passed.
Zach, thank you so much. Steve, thank you for coming. We appreciate you spending time tonight.
Long overdue, my friend.
Yes, yes. Really nice. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're making a lot of people engaged.
Yes, yes.
Awesome.
Thank you. Guys, thank y'all. We appreciate it. Y'all welcome to stay, but I know if y'all want to get home, go ahead. One part to you.
Annual review of Gates Lives, the investment policy.
What in your board packet was the CDA, which is that part of the board policy, getting with investments? We have a local section and then we have a legal section. The legal section is, uh, pretty in-depth. The one on the local kind of covers what legal is in a, in a much more concise presentation. So I was going to kind of go through the local one. If you have any questions about the legal, uh, one, which is a lot more pages, I would be happy to answer those. Uh, so let's look at the CDA local. And this is once a year that we review the policy. Uh, this policy has not been updated since 2019. So it's really been the same policy that we've covered every single year. We use in November each year. But it's a requirement of board policy that we do review the sectional investments and that there is a resolution that is in your board book, that, uh, this will be an action item, that you approve, the review and approve the investment policy. Uh, the first page on investment authority mentions the superintendent or designated by board resolution are serving as investment officers for the school district. Uh, the two investment officers for the school district would be Dr. Pollard and myself. Next you see a list of approved investments that is one to nine. And, uh, the only ones that we are currently using for the school district and our investment plan is number one, uh, government guaranteed obligations, number two, certificates of deposit, and number three, public funds investments, which is number nine, which includes our tech school. Those are the only three instruments that we currently use. As far as the safety objective of our investment policy, uh, we want to ensure the safety of the principal that we're investing. We want to maintain liquidity. Uh, and also we want to maximize his financial returns, which are getting better lately. As far as the, uh, maturity, we have a maximum maturity of one year unless it's approved by the board. And in the note section, I indicated there that back in 2016, the board voted to authorize up to $5 million of investments in CDs with maturities ranging from a year to five years. So we do have nearly $5 million invested in certificates of deposit currently. And, uh, I think the, uh, longest maturity is a year. So we don't really have any long, long maturities in our CDs at this time. Uh, as far as monitoring, we do this monthly, of course. Um, any of the, the government funds have to be pledged by collateral. And, uh, we get those statements every month and make sure that we have adequate collateral that's pledged against the assets, uh, that are in, uh, the pool. And then we do a quarterly investment report to the school board. Uh, some might do it monthly. We've done it quarterly for a long, long time. Quarterly is what's required, no less frequently than quarterly. It includes in that, uh, report to you every quarter, we do include some comparisons to some benchmarks. The district retains clear title of all, um, safekeeping assets. The district retains clear title of all, uh, safekeeping assets. As far as the seller of investments, we do use a broker dealer. We've authorized that. And we, it's both for the CDs as well as the tech school, have two different dealers. And they submit to us, uh, evidence that they reviewed our policy and that they are in agreement and compliant with our policy. And they give us a written, uh, what's called a broker dealer certification. On the last page of the CDA local, it's listed a number of things that are not permissible. And most of them are, are pretty self-evident. Number seven, one is avoidance of bearer form securities. You might wonder, what is a bearer form securities? Basically, that's an unregistered security that's been outlawed since 1980. So I don't even think you can get a hold of any of these things. So I don't know. They still have it listed there. And then the annual review, the board reviews and approves the investment policy on an annual basis. Uh, these policies are also reviewed by TASBE, and any changes to these policies are issued to us by TASBE. Any questions about the investment policy for the school district? Are we ready to go to an action item to approve the investment policy?
Okay, we have a proposal that we have an action item for the investment policy. Do I hear a motion? Linda motions and seconded by Charles. Any more discussion or questions? All approved. Anyone deny it? It passes. Copier purchase.
The president's secretary will sign that resolution, uh, later on tonight. The next presentation that I'm making is, uh, has to do with the approval of our copier purchases. And we have currently thirty-five Xerox copiers. All of our copiers are Xerox manufactured. And they are owned by the school district. We don't lease any of our copiers. In the fall of '21, uh, we entered a contract with the, the current company called Benchmark. They services our equipment. Uh, previous to that, we used Parsons Office. That's where we got started with the Xerox line. And we also used for a year or two, the CTWP Company out of Waco. Copiers represent a very important tool for the teachers. And if you don't think so, you just need to come to some of those superintendent advisory committees. And here, anytime there's an issue with some of our copiers, but legally it's been really good, pretty good position. Benchmark is doing a much better job of maintaining our copiers. Uh, there was a supply issue. A lot of supplies due to the nationals, you know, supply chain problems. And, uh, we, uh, put pressure on Benchmark to find an alternative source. So the source that they were using, in case those things are not available, because it's just not acceptable for our teachers not to have their copiers working and up and running. And they, they've done that. They went to a Plan B in case Plan A is out of supplies, and it's working like a charm right now. So that's great. So the plan is that every year or two, uh, we're going to replenish copiers. We buy them outright. We don't lease them. And then Benchmark is one that services them on a per meter click charge. Back in 2019, we bought eight copiers for ninety-three thousand. In the fall of '21, a year ago, we purchased six copiers for fifty-three thousand. And I proposed tonight that we purchase three copiers. And they've gone up. It's going to be seventy thousand roughly for the three copiers. But these are heavy duty, um, called production machines. They're not just cheapie copiers at all. They're heavy duty copiers, and they're meant to last. The three that we're going to retire, the three D95s that actually were given to us by Parsons Office Supply. And they were copiers that had been traded in to them by Conley ISD. This goes way, way back. So these three copiers are quite old. They're the ones that are representing the bulk of our copier issues. And, um, the speed will be a little bit better than what those were. The cost has gone up. Everything has gone up. And, uh, we were hoping budgeting that would be able to get up to sixty, but it's going to be around seventy. So I have to come up with a budget amendment, come up with an extra ten, because we had sixty budgeted. But, uh, this will replenish three old copiers that are giving us trouble. And hopefully this will, you know, last a long, long time. These three copies about weigh, have a combined total of twenty million copies on them, so they've been used.
Well, that's a couple months.
They've been used. These are workhorses. So I'm proposing that we purchase three. They're, they're called Prime Link B 9100 series copiers. There are a hundred copies in there. For a total combined cost of seven thousand four twenty-three.
No air motion to accept the proposal for the copiers? Okay, Charles. Anyone else second? Linda seconded. Any more questions or discussion?
Where are these going to be?
Uh, one's in elementary, one's going to be intermediate, and the third one's going to be GRI.
And you're, we're going to pay three hundred nine dollars a month per machine for service? It says monthly base maintenance per unit, three hundred nine dollars.
Oh, you're looking at the proposal?
Yes, sir.
But the meter clicks are usually about a half a penny a piece. And then there's a minimum charge. Which page are we looking at now?
Uh, the last one, I believe.
Yeah. So that would be, includes ten thousand units per machine. I mean, that's pretty standard of what we're paying now.
Okay. So they will service these three machines for a thousand dollars a month?
Well, there's, I mean, it depends on how many meter clicks you get, because we have that meter click charge of zero zero five three that they charge per copy. And that, that includes all maintenance and repair of the equipment, as well as all the toner supplies. And any supplies that has to be, as I just said, changed out, including staples.
Any other questions? We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? MOU with Hidden Gem.
Thanks, Darryl. We need those copies.
Last month, we, um, I came up, we made a proposal for an MOU with Hidden Gem. And, um, as a group, we decided to table it so we could get more information here tonight and hear from them. So they've come in tonight. This is Jenny Featherston, and she is going to talk to us about Hidden Gem and what they do.
Thank you for having us here. I'd like to introduce a couple of people with, uh, especially that Diana Barnett. She is our board. And this is Julia Smith and her husband Jack over there. Julia has finished up her, uh, social work degree and will be coming on as our program director. She's already working, but, uh, will be coming on in that capacity soon. But I, I understand that you may have some questions about what we do, what we represent. So is there anything that anybody would like to ask?
Will you just talk about how it formed and who formed it and how you
I work for the DA's office. I'm the victim assistance coordinator. There are two of us. And, um, as I started working with them nine years ago, um, part of my job is I have to find resources and programs for victims to help them, whether it may be for clothing or whatever it may be. And as I started researching and started noticing, our county didn't have a lot of that available. And it was, we had to start sending people out of county, and that bothered me. That I, I figure, and I think you guys could all be in agreement, we should never have to send anybody out of county to get resources. And so, um, as we started, um, really researching things, I mean, even as far as counseling, we were having to send them to Belton or to Waco. And that's not fair, especially if you're from a family that may not have a car or a driver's license. So, um, we'd started, we originally started with what we called Sugar Plum Festival is where we started. We're going to raise money and, um, give to different, uh, agencies. Well, that just never got off the ground. It's just, we tried and we tried and it just didn't get anywhere. But, um, I just felt like God was just laying on my heart that we need to do something for our people and provide. And Righteous Roots stepped up and they started doing first, for, um, and they're, they're not specific, but they're open to a lot of stuff where we still have a lot that need more. I mean, one, one facility's not going to cover everything. And so we are, we have really, as you can see, there's a good list of things that we want to offer. Um, a lot of it will be coming in 2023. Um, one of the things we're very proud of is our GED program, which is free. Um, we have learned in the past year that it's an online program, and people are not motivated to do things on their, on their own. So we are requiring them to come in at least three hours a week to, uh, do their, their classes in the facility. That way, we hold them accountable. And so we have one who is very close to finishing. And, uh, we will pay for her to go on to take her, uh, her class, I mean, her course test at, uh, CTC. And then her plans to have a big graduation, because it should be celebrated. So, um, that's one of them. We have a finance class that'll be starting in January, and you'll start seeing a lot of that in the paper actually coming up because, um, we have a finance guy coming out of Waco who, um, he's going to offer finance classes for our victims. Once they come to the Hidden Gem, they're clients. We changed from victims to clients, um, specifically. Because a lot of those are, uh, women who are in bad situations. They've left the situation, but they do not know how to finance or budget anything. Most of them may not have their GED, and we want to step in and help them. That is our whole goal, is to step into this community and offer resources that we haven't had. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Is a lot of your, do a lot of your clients come from the judicial system?
Yes, we do. We have quite a few, and a lot of them are repeaters. And we're part of a, um, pilot program that's coming out of San Houston State University. It's called the Texas Friendly Initiative, and it's trying to break that cycle of repeat, repeat, repeat victims. And learning how to better serve them and, um, offer services that will help them step up instead of staying where they are.
And what is your main source of funding?
Donations. Donations, that's
From people in Corral County?
In Corral County, yes, sir. We have looked at, we have looked at, um, some grants. We are faith-based. And so the, um, there is a little bit of issue right there where, um, we, we want to keep that faith base. That's very important to us. And so the grants don't always line up. So we haven't found the right one yet, but we're still looking. Um, but we are always looking for, for donors.
Is the faith-based a part of a particular church?
No, sir.
So it's just part of your goal?
Right. Um, all, the three of us that are here, we all belong to different, I'm independent Baptist, she's Southern Baptist, and she's non-denominational. So we're trying to work together, is what we're trying to do. And we feel like, you know, the Bible talks about taking care of your own. That's what we're trying to do.
And what is it specifically that the district's going to use these people for?
So we would use them for, like, some of the classes that they offer, um, specifically, like, some of the ones we've looked at as the budgeting classes. Because we have some, we have some students that could benefit from having just that extra that are already adults that are looking at transitioning and moving out and being independent after they graduate here in a few months. So just getting them connected with something outside, so when they do have questions, they do need resources, they have a place to. It's essentially a handoff for us, um, for the community, for them to have a place in the community they can go to get help.
And has your budgeting been pretty successful, or you?
We, we've only been open one year.
Okay.
So it's brand new. We're still trying to get off the ground. Um, another thing that we have, we've talked to, uh, Mr. Harper about, and I know Righteous Roots has talked about, because of where I work, the DA's office, we deal with a lot of trafficking, and we want to build those resources big time. And if there is an issue with any child in the schools, we want to be able to provide, um, resources for the family, for whatever the circumstances may be.
It's not just budgeting. It's, it's, it's an overall service that they can just, if they need help with clothes, food, I mean, anything, they have an access point.
I don't know about y'all, but when I'm driving around in Gatesville, I just notice more people who look like they're lost or drifting or homeless.
Homeless, yes.
Do you help those people?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. I don't know if you guys have noticed that you can't find real property in Gatesville. And so if you've got a family there in dire need, what are they supposed to do? We've got to have something to help them out. But I know we, we have people walk in off the streets. We've had them come in barefoot many a times. They don't have anything. And so we try and give them what we have and then, um, send them to the resources until we are at a point where we can help more. Um, like I said, we're new, but, uh, we have a big goal and we feel like God is in the middle of it, so.
Do you work with the care center and Boys and Girls Club?
Yes, yes, ma'am. We sure do. With the Boys and Girls Club, we do a lot of, um, like, one of the things, um, we've had a lot of people donate toys. Last year, we were able to give, um, Christmas to seventy kids and twenty-one families, and most of those came out of the Boys and Girls Club. Um, we do a lot with the care center. We, we are trying to partner with everybody, just to try and build our resources. It's not just, hey, we want you to just come to us. No, let's, let's share. Let's take care of our people.
Any other questions? Our concern in tabling last month is we just didn't know as much as we needed to know. And this is very helpful. I appreciate you coming and sharing that with us. And, uh, I think now is, is it back on the agenda, or are we just information?
No, it's an recommendation. Do you, but just you guys want to share anything?
Well, I do want to say that a lot of our, you know, we're talking about money and budgeting, but we're, we're out there, you know, hustling and raising money, you know, serving breakfast, serving lunch. I mean, we're doing whatever we could think of, and, uh,
Wonderful.
We have a lot of energy and we have a lot of love to give.
I'd just like to add, as a parent, you know, I've had kids, you know, graduate from Gatesville. And so, um, from experience and hard times, it was, it would have been important to know of a place like this, you know? And so, um, even getting, um, like a community resource list together to send out in packets to kids is, is huge because it's just to strengthen the families to stay together, you know, so.
There's, I'm sorry.
Coordinate this with all of our counselors and make sure they know.
Yes. One of the, the classes I think is important with, sorry if I get emotional. Families impacted by addiction. We have a lot. And they need to know that we have a resource, and we have people that understand, and we want to help.
Well, I think that goes back to what Julia was saying about keeping the family together, because that's terribly hard.
Exactly.
My question last month and my, uh, reticence about saying yes was, uh, the GED program. But I talked to you the other night at the community thing, and you have a good program there for them to work with. Now, we also, the school also, uh, has a MOU, I think, with, with, uh, CTC. Is that what it's called with CTC, something, with the GED program here? So I would like for you to tell your people too, if they can't do your program
Absolutely.
To go there, because there is a certified teacher that helps.
Okay.
And, uh, just, and I know that you said that they go test at CTC, which they could also, uh, coordinate with the, the program here at the school. So
That's good to know.
You said they paid for it, or you're, you're
We have people who donate too, to sponsor.
And sponsor students, so.
Yes, ma'am.
But if you'd work with them too, that would, that would be good.
Absolutely.
With the GED, that's always a problem. When they get to that point, they don't have the finance to pay for that. And that's a wonderful resource.
We've tried really hard. We, uh, raised money to pay for the program and do everything, so there was no cost to them. Now, what we really would like for it to eventually be, and this is something that's very important to us, is everything where we help, we want them to pitch in themselves too. If they want them to pitch in themselves too. If they want clothing, you know what, come work for an hour, let's put stuff on the shelf. Let's learn how to give back, not just take. And that's, that's very important.
How on earth do you help an addicted family?
You meet the client exactly where they are. Many times they'll come in and, you know, we just sit down with them like a family member would, you know, and openly talk to them and assess them. And we just, you know, determine what resources we can offer them. And if we can't, then we refer them out. But a lot of times we'll, you know, be on the phone for a couple of days trying to find recovery homes to send them. But when we are able to connect them to a recovery home, we like to, you know, get their belongings together, hygiene, you know, things like that. And it's not always successful, you know, but we do follow up. And like she mentioned, Christmas, I think that was the most phenomenal thing I'd ever been a part of. I had personally had help, you know, years ago with Christmas. And last year, being able to be a part of giving that back was just amazing. And so 70 kids, and I know that this year's going to be probably double. And I can't wait for that.
The need is so much greater this year. And you asked about the families, supporting the families. I think sometimes families need to know that they're not alone, that there are other people that have been through it and they've made it through. So we want to just be an encouragement.
Okay, did I hear a motion to accept? Okay, Jimmy, seconded by Calvin, all in favor? Okay, the MOU with University of Texas Medical System, the hidden gyms, I'm sorry. [laughter] Don't give it all our best resources.
[laughter]
It's passed.
Thank you very much.
Now, the MOU with University of Texas Medical System. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.
Well, the motto is doing its best for kids. Not some kids, those kids or these kids, but all kids. So we're always trying to expand our resources because we do, we have a lot of need out there. And this is another MOU, you know, everything, here we go again. But we're always looking for partners and try to help us out because we're trying to help everybody. And we have a growing problem with our licensed counseling of having a backlog. Some of the students are not able to get into their licensed counselor for months, and they're just waiting for their appointment to come through. We have four main providers for our licensed counseling and psychiatry, and that's Central County Services, Starry Counseling, Freedom Reigns, and Community Life. And they're just backlog. There's just so much work out there for them to do. And now we're losing Starry. They can't come and travel to Gatesville because they're not paying for travel anymore. So the counselors are staying put, and they want our families to travel to them. Freedom Reigns, they want to be able to hire more people and have them come out and increase their day so that they can have, they can have a full-time person here all week. But they're not able to hire somebody and provide that for us right now. So we're always looking for end resources. And this one that we're proposing tonight is through the UT Medical School with the Dell Medical School. It's called T-Chat. It is the Texas Children's Health Access Through Telemedicine. And so this is a telemedicine platform so that we can have more like on-demand sessions. We can set up counseling for them through telemedicine and, and make sure that they don't have to leave school to have their, their session. So if you have a scheduled counseling session, you don't have to be signed out and go down with your parents and go have their counseling, we can schedule that in school. We have to provide a private space and a device for them, but they can have their session right there at school, and then they can just get right back to class. So that's one benefit of it. This program is grant-funded and is provided through Senate Bill One, and they're hoping that the more participation they have, the more it's going to be reauthorized every year moving forward. And so we're trying to be a part of that. They have a January launch, and then they have a summer launch in June. And so we're trying to get ready for this next semester so that we can eliminate some of that backlog. Some of those students that are having trouble getting into seeing their counselor, or those that are just coming on board needing counseling or psychiatry, we can get them plugged into this, this T-Chat and get them onto this telemedicine platform. I was a little bit leery about it, telemedicine, Zoom, you know, I'm just an old guy thinking, you know, that's not really good and beneficial, but a lot of our students are already doing that already. A lot of them have their counseling sessions. A parent will sign them out. They'll go sit in the car, have their session on the phone, and then they come back in, sign back in, and go back to school. And so they're doing this already. They have different types of, of appointments through Zoom. And nowadays, all kids, it's about screen time. And so this is more of a positive screen time than them doing something on their own. This program provides five short-term sessions. And within that five short-term sessions, they hope to link them to somebody with long-term sessions if they need it. They consult with us, with our kids, either reg, regular ed or special ed, and they say, okay, what does your student need? And if they don't think they need any more sessions, and we're good with that, it's a collaboration. We share information back and forth from the sessions. They help us set up our IEPs and whatever goals we might need. And we have collaboration and training with the licensed professional and the work that we're doing in school to set up those IEPs. Something that's unique is an urgent same-day assessment. We have a student that's in a, in a crisis episode, and normally we say, okay, we got to transport them and send them somewhere. That's still the case if it's, if that's what we deem as necessary. But we also have students that are just having a real, they're really off that day, and we may not need to transport them, but something, they need some professional help right now. They have also an urgent same-day assessment that they can do as part of their, you know, their five sessions that they give. And all this is free to the school, it's free to the families, and it's just another resource for us to use. We have to identify the student for them. We have to work within those parameters of making sure we have a, a private place and a device. But one thing that does shift some workload to us is right now, whenever we make a referral out, that company, Freedom Reigns or Community Life, they take care of the counseling sessions and the scheduling, and it's off of their schedule. We have to do the scheduling, but we can do that on our time. We can figure out what's best for the student so they don't miss the, the same core subject every time so that we can make that a little bit more attainable and easier for the students to get their session and not miss out on school, have to leave the building. And so we think it's going to be a benefit for us. We are investigating the other schools. There's 14 schools already signed up. Krista and Joyce are going and checking out Round Rock and Copper's Cove, just checking out the logistics of it, seeing how things work. But we're hoping by approving the MOU tonight or getting it signed, that we'll start in January, we'll get the training and get this set up and be able to get our kids involved in it in the spring semester.
So if they don't have to leave the building to go to the car to do, or to go somewhere, they're not, they don't have to sign out and stuff?
Correct. Now, but we do need to provide a, a private, quiet space for them. And so that, that's an issue, you know, on all campuses, but-
That would save, that they wouldn't have to do that part.
Right. It'd be like getting a pass to the counselor's office, but you go into the room and you get, you get your licensed counseling at that time.
Okay.
So the recommendation is to authorize GSD to sign the MOU as presented, to enter to a partnership with UT Dell Medical School and T-Chat as a mental health resource option for our students.
Do I hear a motion? Linda, a second. Calvin, any further discussion?
I have a question. When the student does this, does each campus have a place that, you know, like can set this up?
That's something we have to make sure we design that prior to getting it all implemented so that we can have a quiet place. There's always a place that we could, you know, you can vacate an office and let them do that in, but we need to make sure it's more consistent. So we're going to work with each of the campuses. We have to identify district leads and campus leads in order to, to work with T-Chat. And so that's one of the hurdles that we'll hopefully overcome before we start in January, just to make sure that we can have that set aside for them. And plus, we're scheduling the counseling sessions, so we should be able to schedule that room when it's available as well. And if somebody's not using that office, that's whenever we can use our T-Chat time.
I have one question. For students who are under age 18, is that by parental permission only?
Yes. And it goes along with the, the sped parental rights and, and anybody participating in there, we have to get it upfront that the parents will participate.
Can we have a, a motion? All four? Anyone to post?
Thank you.
All right, brush clearing.
Cedar cutting, that's my favorite topic. You guys made a good observation just a few minutes ago about noticing an increase of people drifting around town.
Really got mad, especially at night.
That look, look, I hate to pass judgment, but appear to be unwell. That they could either be without a home, they could be addicted, something. And so we, even in broad daylight, we had, our SROs did a great job. We had a gentleman walk by, middle of the day. He's got a beer in his hand, he's screaming obscenities by himself, obviously having some sort of issue. He urinates on the side of the building here, and Chief Stiles has to issue him a criminal trespass, and he gets in trouble. And so we want to be proactive about something. And as usual, it's going to cost some money, but it's going to be worth it. Around the cross-country track, we've not had any incidents of anyone approaching anyone or harassing anyone, but we see cans, we see chairs, we see little areas where it looks like somebody has just kind of set up shop in the middle of the brush. And we have had twice down to shoe a couple of men on. And so that is a very wooded area. Lots of women and young people walk that at all hours of the night and morning, and it's dark. And I just feel like that if there was a clear line of sight, keep all the beautiful hardwood live oaks, elms, the nice shade, it'll be, you know, that's a great area out there. But we're going to have to get rid of that brush. It's too thick. There's a, it's just prevents, it proposes so much of an opportunity for someone to hide in there or do something they shouldn't be doing. And so I'd like to-
Clear it.
-get your permission to clear it. It's going to be expensive. It's like six and a half acres worth of just pure brush. And so it would be 20, anywhere from 25,000 to 35,000. Toby's already getting close. He's got a lead on one in particular that he wants to do that will shred and mulch it all. So there's no brush piles and there's none of that. We want it just done. And so my recommendation is that the board authorize the district to spend the money necessary to clear all that brush around the cross-country track to make it a safe area. And speaking of money, the state has given, we're going to have access to $200,000 in a safety and security grant. It hasn't opened yet, but it's earmarked for us. And so we want to use that for this, more fencing around like the intermediate playground in the back that has no fencing around it, and some other things that we really could. The state finally ponied up some money.
Good.
That was going to be my question.
For security.
Okay, we have a motion to clear the brush. Calvin, seconded by Linda, any further discussion? All in favor? You got it.
Thank you, guys.
Chivalry.
Well, that's good. I've heard several people, women, talk about they don't feel safe going through that area. They will not go through there.
It's secluded, yeah.
Right.
Do I remember hearing somewhere that we're putting additional lighting around that also?
The cross-country track has the solar-powered lights. We did that a couple of years ago. We didn't have plans for doing anything additionally. The lighting was going to be more in the parking lot in front of the high school. We have petitioned the city to put up a couple of lights on the existing light poles because back in the summer, that's where the vandalism occurred in the parking spaces. And so we've been working with the city for them to put up some lights in the parking lot.
Be nice, be nice to have that thing lit all the way around.
Location of chivalry credible.
Mr. Amen received an email from Mason Matthews as a part of the chamber wanting to try to kind of petition us to use the area. And I'm not quite sure if he's wanting just the grassy knoll that's the Methodist churches, or if he's wanting to expand out all into the cross-country track area. Scott's a member of the chamber as well. But did you take it, Scott, that they wanted that whole big area?
There's, because of the city ordinance, you have to be within 500 feet of any residence. And so there's two spots in the city that, that we will be able to use, three. Foncolroy, but that's not safe. The cross-country track, as long as we're away from the residents at Hillside. And then the parking lot where we had it last year, right out there in front of Tractor Supply, there's an area within a certain footage that meets the ordinance. And so it would be on the cross-country track. It could be the Methodist church. We'd have to measure it out if that's the area that they wanted. But that's why they're, they're questioning us about using the cross-country track or our property for the chivalry and the-
So they're not interested in where the, the old practice fields are?
No, sir.
The fenced part, no.
So my, my reservations about it is not, I'm not necessarily a hard no on this, but at the same time, I'd like to be able to reserve the right to say no. Because there could be heavy equipment that comes along and breaks up or busts up our cross-country track. Well, who's going to fix it? You know, they'll, the carnival will leave town and they'll say, well, Barrett, we're sorry about that. Or if they want, you know, are we going to host a circus? They, you know, at times they have circuses. Or the little people wrestling and stuff that maybe I don't agree with philosophically, that I don't want to host that. And so if we do something, it might be a situation where we might even charge them. Because frequently, anything, this is the chamber, but oftentimes, things that the city does, we have to pay for. Like the athletic banquet that, that we have at the civic center, 500 bucks for four hours. And we don't charge typically the city to use our fields, use our gyms. And so we're in a financial situation where we may not be able to offer everything for free all the time. So I'd have to know more from-
Who owns that street? Who owns 27th Street?
Hornet Way.
Not 27th Street.
The church.
The, the church owns it?
Are you talking about Hornet Way?
Behind the girls.
Hornet Way, I'm not talking about. I'm not talking about 27th Street.
From across the street.
Main Street back to the behind the girls' baseball field, softball field. Isn't that, isn't that the church that?
Yeah, that's, I thought they-
I don't think the city owns that.
I think the road we put in here built intermediate. And I believe it's part of that construction. But whenever it's like, well, there needs to work to be out there, the city will say, well, you own it. And then we say, well, we want to do, you know, put up one-way streets. And they say, well, we own it. So it's just kind of been a back and forth.
One idea is if you could close that street off for that, those three days and require any carnival rides to be on that asphalt.
I would recommend it. Why don't they just keep having it there in front of McDonald's where they've been having it?
It looked to me like there's a big crowd there.
Yeah.
It was very successful. It's, it's kind of packed in, and we just have to keep working with our vendor, you know, community partners on using their, their parking lot. We wanted to have the idea of bringing everything back to the depot, but we also want to expand the chivalry to be more than just one day, more than Saturday. The carnival's here for about three days, but our main event is only one day. And we want to be able to expand that for our town and say, you know, it's three days of activities. And so we're working on ways of doing that. And we may have to spread out the different venues, but we also don't want to have, you know, alcohol served at a concert on our property. We don't want, we have to know in advance what's going to be set up and, and who's all going to be using the property in enough time.
What do we do with liability if someone gets hurt on one of those rides?
The circus carries $2 million in liability insurance.
But we would have to, we would have to have security. I'm sure our SROs would be asked to, you know, police the carnival workers and all that stuff. You know, there's a lot of implications with that that I just would like to be able to reserve the right to say no.
I'm afraid your facilities are going to get torn up. That's what I fear.
All right, do we have, first of all, do we have a motion to allow the chivalry to use our property for a carnival?
But we don't even know much property they're talking about.
Well, and they weren't even here to present. So I said, based upon the information received, there's meaning of recommendation would be made at that time. We didn't really get any information from them, so there's no recommendation.
I was going to say, it dies for lack of a recommendation. No one, one moment's recommendation. So we go to executive session.
Very good. Thank you, guys.